Assistance will be required to do those at the same time.
Well, I understand that, but I guess to me it seems like if a person is going to be a dental assistant and they're educated in knowledge about certain procedures that you'd be rather so many slices, it's like creating specialists in dental assistance. But I look into it further, you know, but I'm just, I have general question about that, Mr. Chairman.
It's actually, I think it will be more a matter of time whether a dental assistant will take those certificates separately and, you know, maybe they're not prepared at a certain point in time to go ahead and take all three or four, but certainly they can start, you know, and then just do it at different times.
So you're saying they will then get into the practice with one of them.
Correct.
Work their way to get the second one.
Correct.
Work their way to get the third one.
Get a little more experience.
Rather than, you know, once or two.
All at the same time.
You know, I don't think this solves the issue. We've got all these separate dental assistants that specialize in different areas. To me, it seems like it's redundant. You ought to have one that can really do all three or four functions.
It'll take more time for them to get that.
Maybe so, but I mean, it's certainly much better than this cumbersome process that I see, you know.
It's not actually specialty, you know, the way it's actually, it's added functions that can be, you know, it's not that you're gonna, just gonna do coral polishing when you get that certificate. You're able to do what you already did plus that other certificate that you just got.
I understand. I'm just, I think there's too many.
Thank you, Sarah Hinaosa. Members, any more questions for Bernardo Castaneda? I don't see any. Thank you very much for your testimony. Members, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. I have seven cards in front of me, so we are gonna take the first three here. Karen Tool, representing herself, Dr. Shayer, representing the Texas Society of Periodontists, and Dr. Rader, Anesthesia Committee, Texas Society of Periodontists. If we can go in that order, Tool, Shayer, and Rader, that'd be great, whenever y'all are ready to begin your testimony. Tool.
Yes.
You can start whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Chairman Gonzalez, and thank you for listening all these long hours, the Sunset members. My name is Karen Tool. I am a constituent of Senator Watson, who's not here right now, but I thought I'd mention that. So I live in Austin, Texas, and I'm representing myself. I started my career in dentistry by attending a two-year certificate in dental assisting program, and then I decided I'll go a little bit further and become a dental hygienist. So I graduated from dental hygiene, a certificate program in dental hygiene from Howard University in Washington DC in 1970. So I've been a hygienist for a many number of years. I moved to Texas in 73. I got my Texas Dental Hygienist license in 1974. I've worked in many different areas. Most recently, I've worked in a private practice for 27 years, two miles from where I live, so perfect for today's traffic problems. I was very blessed to just have to go to work and be there in 10 minutes or five minutes. Before that, I worked for the City of Austin Medical Assistance Program, and so I dealt with people that were indigent. I remember the Vietnamese that came over and settled in Austin early on, back in the 70s. As a registered dental hygienist, I have the responsibility for maintaining the public welfare and safety of all the patients that I am privileged to serve. I would like to address one part of the issue, one, the key, the key recommendation, one. I'm aware that in the state of Texas, there are 24 dental hygiene schools, and we graduate, and the dental hygiene programs graduate approximately 500 dental hygienists per year. The Health Resources and Services Administration has predicted that in the next decade, there's going to be so many more hygienists than there are dentists within the state of Texas. And this is good in a sense because Texas has very many rural areas and underserved areas where people can't get to the dentist. They can't, like they can in Austin, Texas, you know, go down the street and see your dentist. So in the coming years, I anticipate a collaboration between dental hygienists and dentists so that dental hygienists can go out into these rural areas to give their preventive services. And prevention saves a lot of money in the state of Texas. We can serve, eventually, these hygienists can serve in hospital situations, in private homes, in headstarts, in schools. And so I look forward to the future with dental hygienists providing their preventive services to people that can't ordinarily get to a private dental practice. But this would be in collaboration with the dentist. We don't want to work for ourselves. We want to work collaboratively with dentists.
Thank you, Ms. Tool, very much. Members, anybody have any questions for Ms. Tool? I've worked out of my house for 20 years, so I have less traffic than you do.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for listening.
Dr. Shayer, Texas Society of Periodontists.
Good evening, everybody. I sure thank for the privilege of being here today. My name is Todd Shire. I'm a board-certified periodontist at practice in Houston, Texas, for the past 16 years. I'm here representing the Texas Society of Periodontists, and, you know, we really commend and support the commission for the proposals made, and we pretty much agree with everything there with just a few suggestions. And one relates to the downsizing of the board. We think right now that it's the wrong thing to do, that, I mean, we're really supportive of this kind of new, refreshed board and let them do as much as they can right now to get these things straightened out. And downsizing the dentist's representation on this board, we don't think it's the right timing. I've been involved with the American Academy of Periodontology on their board, and we went through the same struggles. We understand the goals of downsizing the board are certainly appropriate in many instances, but we feel right now that it's the wrong time to do it. The second item is related to the assistants credentialing. You know, for sure, we can improve this, but taking away those credentials, we also think is a mistake. We think that this gives us at least a minimum knowledge basis, that these assistants have that before we hire them, and then we take that, in really relation to infection control and radiology. And we feel like they have those minimum standards. That's something we have to help us hire and then, you know, continue to train them to become good caregivers. These assistants are, have direct patient contact. It's important that they have some minimal knowledge basis. And lastly, on the topic of anesthesia, that we've gone through quite a bit this afternoon and this evening, we support the recommendations. We just really want to echo the idea of evidence-based approach. Our whole training is based on, you know, making good clinical decisions based on the evidence that's available. And right now, I think everybody is seeing that the evidence is not available to us. So how can we possibly spend our taxpayers' dollars in levels of millions without really understanding what the problem is? We know we need to fix it. We support the commission and the board to try to fix it, and our society is wanting to be at the table to help with this as one of those specialties that is heavily involved in Level III sedation. So with that, again, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Members, any questions for Dr. Shire? I don't see any doctor. Dr. Rader, if you'll just take your name and who you represent for the record, and you can testify.
Certainly. I'm Dr. Charles Rader. I practice in Victoria and Georgetown, Texas. I am a periodontist. I graduated in the University of Texas Health Science Center in Houston about 36 years ago. Did my residency there. I served as Vice President of the Texas Dental Association. I served as President of the Texas Society of Periodontists, Dr. Shire's position now. I've served as President of Southwest Society of Periodontists, nine states area of periodontists. More importantly besides that, though, about 15 years ago, I served on the Anesthesia Consultants' Committee for the State Board of Dental Examiners when it still existed. I was the dental representative of the Dental Hygienist Advisory Committee for six years. And most recently, I was asked to serve on the Dental Review Panel, and I just, a few weeks ago, got my note from them that's saying I'm now a certified review panelist. When the anesthesia work group came into being back in February, they invited every specialty in dentistry to send a representative to that work group, and I was the person chosen by the periodontists to come to that group. We met once, April the 15th, for two hours, and had a good meeting, but not a very much in-depth meeting. And in the interim time, I myself have been trying to do what Representative, rather Senator Hinaosa was asking, is show me the data. Where are the deaths? Where are the morbidity incidences? Who is involved with them? Senator Taylor, you were saying, is it oral surgeons? Is it periodontists? Is it whomever? And unfortunately, I was met with exactly the same answer that Senator Hinaosa was given, and that is, right now, that is confidential and privileged information. But this work group, which is consisting of the six specialties that are really involved in anesthesia in Texas, there's a representative for each one of them, plus about three or four board members, I believe is going to be a foundation by which we can start to answer these questions. Where are our problems? There's no way you can formulate a solution if you've gotten the details of your problems put together. Is it education, like Senator Schornner says? Do we need to look at what the demands are for a person to get a permit Level III or permit Level II? We don't know these answers yet. Are these permit Level II that have come out of some training program in Dallas, the ones that are having the deaths and the morbidity? We don't know. And until we are given an opportunity to study the problem, there's no way in the world that we can do anything except sit here and give you our personal opinions. And to me, they're valuable, but they don't count for much in my book. And so my concern is, at this point in time, is yes, I support the board being able to inspect offices. In fact, the statute right now says that interal sedation, oral sedation, all those holders can be inspected. Well, even though you're a Level III or Level IV, you still hold an interal permit II. So right now, in my opinion, they could all be inspected if you want to go by statute.
Members, you have any questions for Dr. Rader? Thank you all three very much for being here. I appreciate it very much. Members, we have five more to go that I have in my hand, and then we're going to move on to the state bar and the board of law examiners. So the panelists now will be Tim Bittenbinder, Texas Society of Anesthesiologists, Frank Ford, past president, Texas Society of Dental Anesthesiologists, and Audra Morris, owner Dental Agility Services in Austin. Y'all can make y'all's way to the front, and we will take them in that order, Bittenbinder, Ford, and Morris. Tim, you can start whenever you're ready.
For the record, my name is Dr. Bittenbinder, and I'm testifying as President of the Texas Society of Anesthesiologists. The TSA represents about 3,600 members. Physician-anesthesiologists provide anesthesia in all sorts of settings, including office-based settings, which include offices, in dental offices and oral surgeons' offices. Advances in the science of anesthesia have significantly increased its safety, such that today, people are quite literally more likely to die in a car accident than under the effects of just anesthesia. Unfortunately, that's led to a very cavalier attitude toward the seriousness of having anesthesia. One of the biggest safety advances in my specialty has been the recognition that anesthesia is a continuum, where people can quickly and unexpectedly go from mild to moderate to deep sedation to general anesthesia. It's not like a highway where you get off on exit 230. It's more like the river rafting trip I had this spring, where I ended up much further down the river than I thought I was going to be. Many serious injuries or deaths in office-based anesthesia are happening exactly that way. For that reason, the American Society of Anesthesiologists requires that anesthesia should never be provided unless you're capable and equipped to rescue a patient from the next deeper level of anesthesia. The key to safe administration is properly trained providers and properly equipped facilities. The Texas Society of Anesthesiologists believes there are some regulatory deficiencies currently and that are preventing it from providing its intended purpose. To address those issues, we recommend the following. The Board of Dental Examiners should adopt the rules and processes used by the Texas Medical Board for inspecting the emergency readiness of those performing office-based anesthesia. Those rules require certain emergency equipment to be available, that's inspected regularly, and that emergency procedures are in place to provide foreseeable life-saving measures related to anesthesia complications. The Board of Dental Examiners should be given the authority to issue cease and desist orders in cases of imminent danger to the public by the licensee. In the event that the dental board takes disciplinary action against the licensee, there should be public information, along with all findings of fact, of course, leading to the disciplinary actions. That standard for transparency currently is used by the Texas Medical Board and reflects the board's mission to put patients first. The dental board should adopt the same anesthesia safety guidelines used by the Texas Medical Board, so Texas can be assured that the same level of safety, whether they're having anesthesia or sedation, in a physician's office or a dentist's office. We believe the board should evaluate the training requirements for the anesthesia certificates, and so in a sense, I agree with many of the previous providers. Lastly, we believe the board should consider guidelines for appropriate patient selection for office-based procedures versus those performed in another setting, a hospital or surgical center. There are situations where the complexities of a patient's medical history warrant a level of care that's just greater than you can do in a dentist's office.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bittenbinder, for your testimony, members. Any questions for Dr.? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Frank Ford, past president, Texas Society of Dentists-Anesthesiologists.
Hello, yes, I'm Dr. Frank Ford. I'm actually representing myself here. I am a dentist-anesthesiologist, and I was representing the Texas Society of Dentists-Anesthesiologists when I am on the anesthesia work group that's been recently put together. I've been a dentist-anesthesiologist for over 30 years. Practiced for over 15 years in the hospital setting, and then the remainder of that time has been in multiple offices, and you would call it portable anesthesia for dental patients. And currently, I have a fixed facility that we take care of mentally handicapped and all kinds of disability folks, adults, in a clinic in Duncanville. And I'm the chief owner and chief anesthesiologist at that position. So I've been around dental anesthesia in a lot of areas for a lot of years, and I began seeing the possibility, as through the years, of the increased demand and the increased number of folks that were having anesthesia done in the dental office. And I was a little concerned all the time coming up. I'm not a politician. I'm a practitioner, and I'm not on any boards to do anything about that, but I suggest, I have some suggestions on how to help with safety problems. I think the, before a practitioner gets permission, gets the capability to give anesthesia to a dental patient, he needs to, that practitioner, he or she, needs to undergo some kind of a practical examination, not just a paperwork thing. It needs to be, and these days, we have a lot of avenues with simulation training is awesome, and that should be utilized before a person even gets a permit. And that should include some, how to rescue an airway, the most common problem of anesthesia problems are airway issues. That person needs to demonstrate that they can rescue an airway. I don't care if they're Level II or Level III, because as our colleague here says, they're going to go to the next level. It may not be intentional, but it's going to happen sooner or later. You put enough people to sleep, there's going to be some that quit breathing, even if you're just sedating them. There's going to be some that quit breathing, because you give somebody a particular dose, well, that may have been the standard dose for most people, but that was way overdose for them. You couldn't predict that. It's not written on their sleeve, so you need to be able to rescue that airway. That needs to be done with simulation training, maybe even on an ongoing basis, but certainly before you get a license to do any of those levels. Secondly, they need to be able to demonstrate that they can rescue things in anesthesia management from anesthesia issues, certainly when they get to Level III and Level IV. And even the dentist-anesthesiologists probably need to undergo every now and then, every few years, certain intervals to do that kind of training. I think that's what the state board needs to do to get this, to get this under control. Therefore, whenever they get into that bind, whenever they get into that situation, the practitioner gets into that situation, they'll have, they'll already know what to do, and they'll be able to rescue them. Trust me, I've had a lot of people quit breathing when I was, as an anesthesiologist, for 30 years. A lot of people quit breathing when I didn't think they should, and I rescued them because I had the training in the ongoing situation. Now, as far as the office inspections, I'd like to speak to that.
Dr. Ford, we're gonna, that's the time limit, members. I mean, I love your testimony. I love the demeanor, and I love just talking to us. I think that delivery is great. I really appreciate that. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask you the question that goes into exactly what you were fixing to say. So if you would, go ahead and complete that thoughtful, which is because I really, really appreciate your delivery and how you're talking to us, so I would love to hear you continue on for just a minute or so more.
As to office inspections, I thank you. I would guess that there's not one of these deaths that were attributed to a lacking in a facility. Whenever someone dies, they don't go, when the public doesn't go, "Oh, that's a bad facility. They didn't have the right facility." No, it's the practitioner. If you want to inspect people, that's where you should go, not the offices. The one guy we were talking about with the Ambu bag being in the car, well, first of all, that's just dumb. You can't fix stupid. You never put anybody, you never put anybody down without an Ambu bag or somebody to deliver positive pressure. And by the way, I think that's actually on the list of things in a regular dental office that they're not even giving, they're not even giving anesthesia. So that's just dumb. But most practitioners, all practitioners, you don't have to inspect them to make sure they have this stuff. They know they're supposed to have it, and they have it. It's going to cost millions of dollars every year for the state to do that, and it's unnecessary. It's not going to save one life.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for Dr. Ford? I'm not seeing any. I'm gonna call Audra Morris one more time. I called the name and don't see anybody else at the table.
Yes, Senator Schornner, thanks. Doctor, in your facility, that's not licensed as an ASC, or is it?
No, sir.
So, yeah, actually, no license on the facility, correct?
No, sir. But I need one.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
I'm practicing safe, I'm practicing safe anesthesia in there because that's what I was trained to do.
Exactly.
And I have the equipment.
I get it.
They didn't have to come look at it.
You know, Sunset regulations figure, I don't really talk about inspections and this and that, but it really comes down to the individual providing that anesthesia.
Yes, sir. And that's where you should look.
Just like a surgeon, you need to have the education experience and judgment to be able to provide that service. And how do we go about instilling that into how the state regulates dentists? And we don't want to diminish access to any great extent, but at the same time, we want to protect those receiving dental care, dental and anesthetic care. How do you go about improving that is the difficulty I'm having in my brain. I appreciate your testimony.
Great. Members, any more questions for our panelists up here right now? Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Members, we have two more, and then we'll move on to the state bar of Texas. The chair calls James Chancellor, representing himself, Dr. Chancellor, and the chair calls Dr. Karen Street, who is also representing herself. Okay.
Dr. Street's not here.
Okay, Dr. Street's not here. James Chancellor is joining us. All right, waving at us.
Yeah. Make a good target from down here.
All right. Yes, sir, whenever you're ready.
I'm James Chancellor, former member of the State Board of Dental Examiners, went off in February. A dentist-anesthesiologist. Practiced general dentistry for maybe 35 years, and my last five years in practice, I limited my practice to anesthesia for dentistry. And I'm concerned about the office inspections, particularly Dr. Kiner's testimony about it being a facility inspection, making sure everything's there, it's nailed down. In California, they have provider inspections. It's not facility inspections. The anesthetics or sedations, whatever it may be, are observed by qualified reviewers. They ask questions, take, get knowledge, but it's a very practical approach. It's not the facility. So itinerant anesthesia providers can still practice. There's physicians out there, and there's dentist-anesthesiologists out there that provide anesthesia in California. They still have deaths, even though there's office inspections. Oral surgeons go through their own office inspection on top of that, and they're still having deaths. There's a high-profile death going right now in the California Legislature, Caleb's Law. It was a five-year-old that passed away while having a supernumerary tooth removed. There's also the other end of the spectrum, where Florida did exactly what Dr. Kiner's suggesting for Texas, where we nail down all the monitors. You can't move the monitors even within the office, and there's nobody providing itinerant anesthesia in Florida. You've got over 20 million people, and there's maybe one physician, I think, that's managed to make it through, but it's very complicated, very difficult, and it's denying access to care to those in need it. My last five years, I provided anesthesia for special needs patients in the state-supported living centers, specifically San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Brenham, Houston, Richmond area, and Lufkin. And those are difficult patients. They're not all ASA 1 and 2, that's for sure, but they need the anesthesia, and I was providing that. And in all of the 13 state-supported living centers in Texas, there's a dentist-anesthesiologist in each of those. Yes, and that's only happened over the last five years. So our special needs patients are getting the care they need for their dental treatment, where they couldn't, we're not putting everybody to sleep, but there's probably a good 80 to 100 people, patient cohort, that does require in each of those facilities. I'm open for questions.
Vice Chairman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doctor, having served on, how long were you on the board?
Seven years.
Okay, so you reviewed a lot of the cases that we've been discussing here today.
Yes.
And without, please don't, you know, betray any confidentiality, but...
This deal will step on me here in a minute.
But we have heard some speculation that the deaths are from a wide, diverse group of providers in terms of specialties. Is that a, or is it your, you know, no, no, there's, it's all a particular kind?
No. In the cases I reviewed, you know, I did see a dentist-anesthesiologist death.
Wow.
Yes, and, but it was the provider that you've, you know, it was in that text or whatever, you know? I reviewed the report. I served on the ISC, so I guess I was judge and jury, and I felt there wasn't enough evidence to just take, you know, take his license away, get rid of it. Because the patient involved was a 39-year-old, morbidly obese male with 99% blockage in his anterior descending, you know, coronary, so that thing could have blown up any time, but he didn't have the proper equipment with him when he did it, and that's where we sent you.
He the dental anesthesiologist?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, and so the disciplinary repercussion for that dental anesthesiologist was nothing?
No. It's reflected in your... It's reflected in your, the information you've got in your-
Sorry, again, I-
Yeah, so-
We're hearing, you're getting in trouble, okay. Try not.
Please, whoever, whoever is, whatever voice I hear, can you please come up to the table? We can't, we can't yell from the audience.
Again, without going into specifics, just broadly, is it a bunch of different specialties? Is it people that are really right out of school, so they're just, they're lacking experience? Maybe they have the training? Is it-
I really wonder if it, what I was seeing was young children that were sedated and maybe overdosing local anesthesia on top of that. The practitioner just wasn't well-trained and misjudging. And I've even seen oral surgery issues, you know, with Level 3 and 4. And, you know, if we're going to follow the medical model, you know, we might consider that, you know, when you're using deep sedation, general anesthesia, you shouldn't be doing both procedures. You know, it's very difficult to do that, and I did that for a number of years, but I always had, the wife was ACLS-trained and a dentist, and she helped a great deal in that regard, as far as my being able to monitor and do the procedures. But the medical model is, I believe, is a much safer approach, where, you know, you've got someone who's well-qualified, you know, a dental assistant monitoring, watching, you know, the patient, and then you've got someone else who's doing the dentistry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Senator Taylor. Senator Schwarner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, when did you roll off the board?
February.
February this year.
That's my last.
Right. And so you were involved in evaluation of some of these dental anesthetic-
Yes.
-deaths and the actions taken by the board regarding ISCs and things like that? Okay. And your background, again, I didn't hear when I was, when you first said.
I did my dental school at the University of Texas Dental Branch in Houston. I did my medical anesthesia residency at the University of Texas Medical Branch.
You're a dentist anesthesiologist? You're a dentist anesthesiologist?
Yes, but it was a medical program, a medical anesthesia residency, 1873.
Okay. And you mentioned, in the case that you briefly mentioned, regarding the death that-
Don't get me in trouble.
Okay. I really want to go after you on this.
I know, I know you do.
I'm not real happy with the action, at least the portion that I heard, but, okay, we'll dive into it very soon, I'm sure, regarding, it was, that was a decision made at the ISC level, or by the expert panel?
No, there wasn't, no, there wasn't an expert panel at that time. We were reviewing those cases individually, two board members. If there was a tie, then, you know, there was, one felt there was a lack of standard care, there'd be a third board member that would take a look at it. But I think the, a big part of that that hasn't been stressed was that the patient did have severe coronary blockage.
All right, let's not go into that anymore.
That's wrong.
Members, any more questions for Dr. Chancellor?
I want your class.
I don't see any. Yes, sir?
Can I make one comment on the ISCs?
Very quickly.
Okay. It's important that there's a dentist board member there to, the ISCs are only done if the respondent doesn't like the proposal from legal, and Mr. Deal can, you know, testify to that, but the board members there to gather any additional information that we may not have. We can't, the narratives may not be totally complete, and it helps us to be able to question the dentist and make a judgment on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator Schwarner.
Going back to that issue, it's one of the core issues of the dentist members of the board getting into the nitty-gritty. You've already had an expert panel give a recommendation, or staff give a recommendation for the ISC, and from what I'm hearing, dentists, our members of the board, go in and they are essentially kind of on the winch hunt regarding further expansion of charges and secondary actions. Do you want to speak to that as a prior board member?
Yeah, I, I don't recall, if it's-
I'm right here, not there.
No, okay, if it's recommend, worry about this. If it's recommended for dismissal-
Right.
It's gone to that quality control committee and like-
Right, which is a quasi-committee, we found out earlier.
It's like Dr. Austin said-
It's only dentist members of the board.
Dr. Austin said that the, it's to help make sure that the review committee's doing their job, and we're, and we really don't have to-
Now, the 290 cases, only 10 were sent back, of which only three had additional action requiring non-disciplinary medial-
And it's a small percentage, you know, and it's-
So why are y'all doing it?
Well, we may not be doing it. I mean, I'm-
Well, we are still, according to Dr. Austin.
Well, it is, but I, I'm just thinking that the ISC primarily functions as those respondents that had some sort of standard of care issues, and they're allowed to present their case with their legal representation, and there needs to be a board member there to have reviewed the case, as Dr. Austin said, because we'll spend a day, easy, going over those eight cases and being prepared, so that we can ask the questions. It's not, he wasn't here for dismissal. He was here for, he didn't agree with what the board order was, or the agreed settlement order. And so that's the only reason the board member is there, just to say, you know, give me some more information, so I can, you know, I can understand what was going on.
I find it troubling still regarding how the board goes about its business of supervising the actions of the actual staff and its secondary exploratory actions regarding all the ad hoc committees and the lack of focus on the bigger picture of the, I'll say it again, health, safety, and welfare of the people receiving dental care, and the licensees and their qualifications is necessary to provide a certain level of anesthesia or whatever we were trying to regulate.
Well, the, the American Dental Association put together their guidelines, and the 60 hours for Level 3 and 20 patients is-
For ASA 1 patients over the age of 12.
Right, well, yes, okay, and I'm even thinking ASA 2, but I haven't read them lately, so you may have more information than I do.
The board took no action for years regarding-
But that's what the postdoctoral programs in general dentistry, pediatric dentistry, periodonics, those are the guidelines that they go by. Even though they've got a two-year residency program, a three-year residency program, they make sure that all of their graduates meet those standards.
But there are postgraduate kind of 60-hour training courses being offered in Dallas that everybody passes, that then allows them to get a permit from the State Bar of Dental Examiners, State Board of Dental Examiners.
There is that, there is that mechanism of doing it.
And you go out and you get a portability permit, and all of a sudden, you're on your way. And y'all didn't think that was a problem?
I didn't think it was a problem, sir. I'm sorry. I, you know-
You don't think it-
I don't, I really don't. I think we, I haven't seen-
I disagree with you strongly.
In the seven years I was on the board, I never saw a death of a moderate sedation. They were all conscious sedations, never saw a single one, and I would have thought I would have seen one. One. I saw one case where a patient lost a couple of fingers, intra-arterial, you know, line, screwed that up, but that was a moderate sedation, it was conscious sedation, but he messed that up. That's the only thing I've seen. I've seen no deaths. And I was on that board for-
And patient selection, things like that, are something you consider?
No, well, patient selection's definitely a problem, and you can see it, but that doesn't always happen with the perineral sedation holders. It happens with the folks that are doing moderate, moderate sedation, even minimal sedation on kids.
Goes with the judgment issue and education experience to actually have that judgment, to provide that service for which we rely upon, again, the State Board of Dental Examiners, to put in place for the profession. If y'all can't do it, someone else, we're going to do it. We're going to do it.
I guess my, my other, we didn't always see everything that everybody else saw. I mean, only staff saw everything, we didn't. As board members, we were not omnipresent. We just, whatever was given to us for reviews, we did that. Whenever we were asked to do an ISC, we did that, and-
Then you had the quality assurance committee as well, which looked at-
No, but the quality assurance committee hasn't been in effect for at least a year, only a year and a half. It's about, is the length of time it's been since the last legislative-
Quality control committee.
Yeah, quality control committee. And I didn't even know it existed until I was asked to serve.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schwarner. Vice Chair Taylor.
I just want to make, I just wanted to get you to repeat one thing that you said to Senator Schwarner. I just want to make sure I got this right. You said that all the deaths you've seen were what kind of sedation?
I, I don't know, I didn't see any Level 3 perineral sedation deaths, because it's, you know, you can control it, you're titrating. It's intravenous, you know, if you're giving small doses and waiting for the effect of the drug, you know, this is, but I have not seen that.
So all, so everything you saw was Level 2?
Yeah, if I saw anything, it was sedation of children.
So all Level 2 children?
Yeah. And how, you know, I don't say all, but I never saw anything other than if there was morbidity and mortality associated with it, it was, it was with very young children.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Schwarner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just heard, I think, that there were no perineral-associated deaths that you witnessed as a board member or knew about as a board member?
Yes, sir, I reviewed.
You know, we knew, there were 13, or 100 complaints filed, 2011, 2016, 41 deaths, of which the board found some standard of care violation, which we'll not go into further yet. According to my information, 10 of those were perinatal, 13. You don't, you don't agree with that information?
I never saw them, sir.
You never saw them as a-
As a board member, I never reviewed those cases.
Well, if anything, this, this whole hearing has actually piqued my interest more in the dental board, not less, so thank you very much.
And there was already a lot of interest. Senator Watson would like to ask a question.
Yeah, I know he does. And that's the question I want to ask. You voluntarily came down here to testify?
No, no, that was a joke. Go on.
Members, any more questions for Dr. Chancellor as he runs out the door? Great. Dr. Chancellor, thank you very much for being here and for your testimony. I appreciate it. That is all the cards I have for this committee, unless there's somebody going to come up in. I don't see any. So thank you all very much, Sunset Staff and the agency and the witnesses, appreciate it very much. We are now going to move on to our final-